Good evening. I'd like to call this Thursday, June 24th, meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to order. Would the General Counsel please call the role?
And do I do flag salute first?
I did, but it's number two on the agenda tonight, so I defer to the agenda's order.
Oh, my goodness.
Let's please rise for a flag salute. We're going to go out.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the General Counsel now please call the role?
President Cobb.
Here.
Vice President Bonbright.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
And I believe Director Keating is excused.
Yes, she is.
And we're expecting Director Strocher.
No, he's also excused.
Great. We do have a quorum.
Thank you.
And then does your agenda, President Cobb, have item three as our land acknowledgement?
Yep.
Wonderful.
Item number three, land acknowledgement. Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and sociopolitical realities. And I just want to note for the public, like, we've been doing the land acknowledgement for a couple of months now, I believe, but we've taken a step to really formalize that as a part of our meetings by adding it into the agenda items. So we look forward to continuing that tradition moving forward. Item number five, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Aye, so move.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adopting the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is adopted. Item number six, recognition of staff, students, and community. Six point one, recognition of 2021 Washington School Public Relations Association Award winners.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors recognize the Public Information Office team in collaboration with members of other departments for receiving the 2021 Washington School Public Relations Association awards and their ongoing contributions to communicating the positive work happening throughout Tacoma Public Schools.
Good evening, President Cobb and members of the board. Each year, the Washington School Public Relations Association honors the best school communications from among 295 districts across the state and recently announced their winners for 2021. Typically, your communications team here at Tacoma Public Schools leads the pack in honors, and the team sets a high bar for itself, not only keeping our staff and community informed, but also being innovative and creative trend setters. This year, staff members from the Public Information Office, in collaboration with members of other departments, took the top best-in-category honors in three categories over communication, PR or marketing campaign, electronic newsletter, and video production. In addition, the team won seven other awards, and I'd like to give you the highlights of those. TPS won three writing awards, and all were stories-
That were written by Communications Coordinator Nora Doyle. The top three video awards statewide went to our masterful video storyteller Casey Madison. Strategic Communications Coordinator and webmaster Ray McNally won honors for our new website that was launched last July, and Ray recently was voted as president-elect of the state association, which is a significant honor in itself. Winning second place in communications, PR, or marketing campaign was a large team led by Amber Slate and Katherine McCarthy from the Public Information Office for the Share the Love Virtual United Way campaign that inspired our TPS employees to donate $120,000 this year to the United Way of Tacoma Pierce County. And finally, I'd like to ask Lindsay Oslin and Angela Wally to come forward while I describe the final major award. The state's top award for communication, PR, or marketing campaign is considered the premier award of the entire competition. It's tough to win because, by their nature, campaigns are complex and multifaceted. This year, a cross-departmental collaboration between Teaching and Learning and the Public Information Team won the top honor for our unique daily TV school. As a large urban district, obviously during the pandemic, it was, it became very clear early on, as we tried to reach children who weren't in school, that initially, many of them did not have access to online school. So we needed to come up with some way to reach those, those children, and many of them had access to TV. So Teaching and Learning identified these two supremely talented teachers, Lindsay Oslin and Angela Wally, to teach targeted TV lessons to our youngest learners. And our wonderful producer, Kevin Medford, who also produces the board meetings, from back there, supported the effort with set design, videography, and editing. Teresa Potter, best known as our district's central administration building receptionist, stepped into a recurring role on the show known as Miss Teresa. She taught art lessons on the program. And Strategic Communications and Marketing Coordinator Katherine McCarthy handled all the communications and promotion of the TV school. Let's just say the contest judges were astounded by the creative way to reach children during the pandemic. Now, I'd like to give Lindsay and Angela a chance to say a few words about their experience, but first, I'd like to honor all the winners with a round of applause.
Thank you to the board and Superintendent Santorno, who was also a guest on our TV classroom. This effort really was a lot of departments coming together. We're really very proud of the level of collaboration that happened to make this come together for our students here in Tacoma, particularly from Tammy Larson, who is our director. And this was her idea, and she is an amazing leader, and we just thank her and all of you for this opportunity.
And we look forward to next year as well.
I think on behalf of the board, just want to echo Dan's congratulations to all of the award winners. And on the TV Tacoma in particular, like, it was great. And I'll just say, and I can see the team effort in action. It was like the social media posts about it that reminded me to like, check in and watch a couple episodes just to see how it was going. It really did feel like something that should be on like PBS and like a kids' special. So just congratulations to you all for all the great work.
Yeah, I just wanted to also add my congratulations and say I'm always amazed, and I've stopped being surprised by the creative and innovative work that is so unique that comes out of this team here at Tacoma Public Schools. And I think it is because of the collaboration across, across departments, and it takes a village, as we say. And I'm really proud of the way everybody works together, and thanks so much for coming up with these creative ways to keep kids engaged during this very difficult year. And we heard a lot about it, if you watched, looked Facebook or others from families, saying how these kinds of tools really help them feel less stressed about their, what was happening with their, their kids not being in school. So thank you to every single one of you for each, for all of you, for each of these awards or for different, different pieces of the whole puzzle on how we served kids this year. So thank you so much, and congratulations, and looking forward to, yes, as you said, what's coming next.
We'll move on to item number six point two, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Amanda Figaro.
On behalf of the Community Partnership Office, Ms. Amanda Scott, the Deputy Superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors recognize Ms. Amanda Figaro as being awarded the Gold Star Partner Community Award. And then I would like to take a moment to speak a little bit about Amanda. Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, school districts, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and the whole child. Partners work and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, TPS recognizes schools cannot do it alone. In a recognition of the investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies and honors and thanks to a community partner who has made the difference by doing what is best for kids. Ms. Scott writes about Ms. Figaro. If you ask people about Amanda Figaro, you will likely hear the words higher educational professional, skilled facilitator, student advocate, leader, and scientist. After serving with Amanda as a volunteer co-chairs of the Tacoma College Network over the last five years, I would concur and add more words: equity warrior, poetic, empathy, and proud Latina. Ms. Figaro is the Senior Director of Student Transitions and Success, providing vision and leadership for all activities associated with student transition functions within the Division of Student Affairs, and serves as a principal member of student success teams on campus. The position oversees programs, initiates, that span pre-college youth through alumni, with focusing on supporting UW Tacoma's high population of first-generation students. The Senior Director is responsible for both on-campus and external affairs initiatives that promote college-going culture for K-12 youth, persistence through degree completion, and post-secondary experience. Amanda is responsible for the revitalization of the youth education collaborative, collaboration, excuse me, called the Math Science Leadership Program. Amanda only had four months to redesign MSL, to redo the curriculum and define funding. Her efforts paid off. The program, which connects underserved kids to STEM fields, is now in its 19th year. The MSL program was designed to encourage, motivate, and inspire Tacoma Public School students to succeed in science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and develop the leadership academic skills necessary to pursue a career in STEM fields. Creating access and opportunity is more than a job to Amanda. It's personal. She said, "I'm very aware when I walk into spaces that it's not me that's in that space. It's my whole family. It's everyone who didn't have the same chance as I did. And it's everyone who has told college wasn't an option for them." I would just add on a personal note, I've had a chance to watch, observe, and be honored to be in the room with Amanda, as I would say that she's not just a whole-child champion, but a whole Tacoma citizen champion, and does what she believes is best for every citizen, every day, to help them on their journey. So with that, I'd like to take a moment to honor Ms. Amanda Figaro. Amanda, you're welcome to step up, and I apologize, I do not have our wonderful plaque for you tonight, but I will make sure that you get that in there.
I'm working from home anyway, Josh. That's fine. No, thank you all very much for the recognition. I think that Tacoma is a very special community. The partnerships are only possible because of everyone in this room, everyone who gives with their heart every day to help make sure that students succeed. I'm proud to be part of this community, and I look forward to continued partnerships with all of TPS families and community members. So thank you.
Thank you.
Were you going to say something, Dr. Garcia?
I was going to just say, you know, as a proud WSU alumni, it always humbles me of the greatness of the UW Tacoma family. And I feel like, yes, I know that we have a number of Husky champions in there, and Amanda is definitely a great role model for all of us. So thank you again, Amanda.
And I'll just say, I just want to thank you, Amanda, for all the work that you do. It's been some time since I've gotten to work more closely with you in the context of all the great college support network collaborations that have been building and are continuing to build through the decades. So I've gotten, though, to see you from afar, continuing to be consistent in your leadership. So thank you for the ongoing partnership. Director Leon?
Thank you very much for your support of these students. And many folks may not realize how much work it takes, how much support it takes to have folks be successful, not just getting out of high school and into this college environment, but succeeding in college. And it's not as easy as some folks may think it is. So it's quite a big role, and thank you very much for continuing that success of those students, and then the whole community really from that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number seven, report to the board. Seven point one, Healthcare Careers Academy.
In 2018, Healthcare Careers Academy was launched in collaboration with partners in the healthcare industry, higher education, and nonprofits. It is a four-year, part-time program offered at Stadium and Mount Tacoma High Schools. Students engage in experiences inside the classroom and in the field to enhance student learning and promote healthcare careers, a high-demand industry in Tacoma Pierce County and across the country. And Kristin Tanner is going to introduce the report to the board.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for having us. Like Ms. Santorno said, I'm Kristin Tanner, and I serve as the HCA District Administrator, and I'm here with my partners in crime for this amazing program. So I've got Mary Lee Tambera here, who is the district coordinator and project manager, Dr. Pagano, Chancellor of UW Tacoma, and Lois Bernstein of Multicare. We're each going to take a few moments to talk with you about the program. It is a collaboration among the region's healthcare systems, the universities, and the hospitals. And we provide a strong and vibrant pipeline to the healthcare careers for Tacoma students through experiential learning, a connection to industry professionals, and academic-focused classes. The program is currently at Stadium and Mount Tacoma. And this meets the strategic goals of academic excellence and partnerships. And as was mentioned, it's a four-year, part-time program at those schools. So students take three classes each year within this Healthcare Careers Academy. Mary Lee is going to take us through some more specifics of the program, and then we'll hear from each of the partners as well.
Thank you, Kristin. Again, my name is Mary Lee Tambera, and it's so great to be here and see everyone. We're really excited about this program. So I'm going to take you through what we do. Okay, so in the classroom, students are getting college credit, industry-recognized certifications. And here you can see in the photo, they're practicing radial pulse and blood pressure, and then they're getting their CPR certification. This is a picture of one of our classrooms. You can see it's set up like a medical office. And in the back, there is a sim mannequin that breathes and has a pulse. In the middle is a phlebotomy chair where students can learn how to draw blood. And here, students are using micro pipettes in the biology room. This is not advancing. Oh, there we go. Okay, so now I'm going to take you through each grade level. So in ninth grade, students rotate through health class, biology, and English. In addition to that, they also go on field trips and hear from guest speakers. So before COVID, we were putting our Mount Tacoma and Stadium students together. They're at UPS, learning about all the healthcare-related programs. Here they are at Bates Technical College. Oops. Want to go back one. Our clicker's not working very well here. There we go. So these are our former guest speakers that came into the classroom before COVID. And this is what it looked like this year during COVID. It was all virtual. And this is 10th grade. Students rotate through bio med, chemistry, and English. And they participate in three experiences, the Career Connect. So it's, I don't know what's happening with the slide, but it's a little cut off. So in the bottom is where they engage with a career mentor panel, and they go on clinical hospital observations and college classroom observations. And the latter is really important because some of our students feel really intimidated by the college experience, and so just getting them into the classroom just makes it more familiar for them. So in Career Connect, students select one of 12 pathways. Our most popular one is nursing and behavioral health. This year, we had 12 panels with over 40 panelists. This is an example of our nursing panel. We always have a student, a professional, and an instructor. They talk about their pathway from high school to where they are today. And they really also talk about, you know, what is the day in the life of a nurse? And we really tried to get panelists that are very open and engaging, that will talk about their struggles, quite honestly, because we don't want our students to think that you have to lead a perfect life to get into a healthcare career. So we've had people talk about having children right out of high school, being in difficult relationships, and they talked about how they navigated their way into a healthcare career. In 11th and 12th grade, they take more biology, AP language comp, and senior English. And then we connect them to the Next Move internship, where they learn professional skills. They have a volunteer internship, and they create a high school-to-college pathway plan. Here's the Next Move intern, Mia Kreider. She was at Allen Moore Hospital checking patients in. We connect our students to other opportunities in the district. Next Move internship, they're very proud to have become the first endorsed Washington State career launch program, and it's centered around a nursing assistant certification. So the pathway is 11th grade, they have an unpaid internship. Then they get their license in the summer, and then in 12th grade, they get a paid internship. So it was an amazing response. Brittany Scoville is the lead on that. And she, when she put applications out, there were 130 for 24 seats. So you can see that there's a high demand for this in the district. So of the 24, seven were HCA students. So this is an overall view of what the ninth through 12th grade experience looks like inside and outside of the classroom. So our ultimate goal is for students to obtain eight college dual-credit classes. These meet prerequisites for college, so that will save them time and money in getting their degree. So we also want students to know that with an AA degree, you can have a family livable wage. So if a lot of school's not for you, that's totally an option. And then we help them with pathways all the way up to MD. So this conversation of Healthcare Careers Academy started because our healthcare professionals don't represent our patients. So we have worked hard to have a diverse class. And so on the right, you can see our breakdown of race and ethnicity. Next to that are our pronouns. And to the left, we surveyed our students. We discovered there's over 12 languages spoken. Forty-six percent are on free and reduced lunch, and 4% have an IEP. Currently, we have 290 students, and that number will grow next year when we have all four cohorts. Next slide. There we go. So we really couldn't do this work without our partners. Their logos are here. Two of them are going to speak later. We collaborate a lot with them. So this is how we engage with our partners. We have five committees. And the conversation of Healthcare Careers Academy began with the Steering Committee. These are the representatives on the Steering Committee that still meet today. And now I'm going to hand it back over to Kristin, our fearless leader, who is going to talk about how they have engaged with the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lee. So where did this all start? This started back in 2018 when the Steering Committee really met to dive into why. What's the big why with the Healthcare Careers Academy? And that group came up with these six vital signs, the Principles for Design. So really a focus on equitable access for opportunities, the coordinated educational pipeline that you see, a sustained pathway to reduce those barriers and demystify the pathway to healthcare career, a strong emphasis on the partnership and industry workplace learning or experiential learning, and then community investment from both the in-kind funding streams as well as direct funding streams. So from this, these are our action steps and our action plans. So we were able to develop some measurable goals that included program establishment, an enrollment and diversity goal, as well as midterm goals to increase the number of industry-recognized certificates, like the NAC program that you saw, Mary Lee explained. And then a career exploration and skill development piece to really look at what is that pathway from ninth grade into career? And how can we make sure that that pipeline is not only open for access, but also demystified for our students? So we've done that. And the pathway development piece is the place where we're really focusing right now. So how do we make sure that that, that each student has a defined pathway to a post-high school career? And we've set some time-defined goals on that piece. And the community partners and institutions of healthcare are absolute partners in this work, and we could not do it without them. We also couldn't do it without some significant funding from our partners, as well as the school district. CTE is huge in this program, so just a huge thank you to the CTE office and John Page and Tacoma Public Schools and the board, as well as Multicare, Virginia Mason-Franiscan Health, Goodwill, University of Washington Tacoma, University of Puget Sound, Tacoma Community College Bates Technical College, and the Greater Tacoma Community Foundation, who runs a fund just for us. The biggest just thanks goes to Dr. Pagano and Lois, who are going to speak now, for helping start this program, as well as kicking it off in a great way. So, Dr. Pagano.
Thank you, Kristin. And first of all, I didn't have anything to do with the content of this program. I'm an engineer, and, but obviously, the quality and the professionalism that's gone in, it's got great content. It's a wonderful program academically. As Chancellor of UW Tacoma, of course, we had a special interest in the product, the students coming through this program, being better prepared to come into the healthcare positions that, not positions, but careers that we have, a steady pass at UW Tacoma, and then on to the fields. But also, UW Tacoma, as you all know, is an urban-serving university. So as I was studying, trying to get the job as chancellor here, I learned about Carla Santorno. I learned about Tacoma Public Schools, the work they did as a community to increase the graduation rates, and I was very impressed by that. I'd spent most of my career in a land-grant university, which serves the state, like WSU does. It serves the whole state. But UW Tacoma is like that on steroids. It really focuses what it serves to this community that it is in. So that was very interesting to me. So when I got here and found out that CHI-Franiscan and Lois at Multicare was interested in starting this, of course, I joined it right away. So I was in Carla's office with Josh right away, I think in 2015, in the late 2015. So Kristin said it started in 18. Well, we talked about it for three years before it started. About two years was mostly all talk. We all had really good ideas. And then we brought a consultant in so we would have more progress. And the consultant charged us with a timeline, so then we had to really get going. And the timeline forced us to start the students, kind of like an airplane that's, you're building while it's flying, because we just built the ninth grade program first and started it, and then built the 10th, 11th, and 12th. So it's been a great opportunity for, for our school. We love being a part of this program. We have other people besides me, obviously, that are working on the content. So it's been a special thing for me to watch these graduates come in a year now. And hopefully, some of them come to UWT. So thank you for involving us. Oh, and now let me introduce Lois Bernstein, my colleague from Multicare, who was there on that first day as well.
So this program could not be where it is today without amazing leadership and the work of the two ladies that you just heard from. As Multicare, and speaking on behalf of all of the partners that you saw, we are so happy to be involved in this because we can see the excitement that the students have, and we know that those students will be successful, and hopefully, they'll work their way back around to us. You know, we talked, Mary Lee talked a little bit about what's going on with nursing, and I can tell you that for those of you who have been in a healthcare facility recently, you may have noticed that our nurses, you know, are aging, right? Thirty percent are over the age of 55. By 2025, there'll be 30,000, a shortage of 30,000 nurses in just the state of Washington. So we are very excited and happy that this program is occurring. So we are very excited and happy that this program is occurring. But, you know, it's more than just nursing. Healthcare careers is, they're really an in-demand area, and there's a need for medical assistants and occupational and physical therapists, IT professionals, and leadership. So really, all areas of healthcare, there's opportunity, and we really look forward to seeing the kids back inside our facilities again. You know, I know it was tough for the students to not be able to have that experience during the pandemic. Now that we seem to be in a little bit of a better place, we're really looking forward to welcoming students back on our campuses and really participating in this program fully. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I know that my colleagues here on the board are going to have questions and comments, and I'm looking ahead to the next slide, and it says questions. So I want to defer maybe to my colleague, Director Leon, to see if you have any questions or comments.
Is this, is this the right time for the questions?
Yes, of course, and we just have some more information available on the slides, and we're happy to share with anyone that's got questions after as well.
Okay. Excellent. Thanks for the presentation. You have the importance of having healthcare professionals that look like our patients is, is one of the key things that you've already mentioned. So I think that goes all, across all the fields, and that's something we strive to do in, as we recruit our medical students and residents for my residency that I work at, and they've helped give some of your talks to some of your students, and I know they've gotten a lot out of that, so I hope that that partnership can continue. But as you said, as the whole group has said, this, this happens with the whole community coming together, and we have a shortage in nursing, but also in a lot of other healthcare professions that are creeping up on us. I think one of the other things that we do need to help with in the whole industry is probably also increasing some of the wages for the medical assistants, because I know that's something that we've had trouble finding and hiring at MultiCare also. So that's not something in charge for you, but I think that's something for the whole community and industry to think about. And I'm curious about the, just the 10th grade, or you mentioned in there there were some AP English and some English that's in this program. Is that a separate English class that just these health students take? Or is it just, they take the regular English with other, other students? I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, so the, the English class is actually themed around healthcare, and so the students are grouped together as a cohort in ninth grade, and they read, Henrietta Lacks is one of the novels that they're reading, and they're doing a novel study. They're also doing the regular prescribed curriculum, but they've got some healthcare-themed assignments along the way. They also work very closely with the biology and the healthcare careers teachers so that they're infusing those ideas through all three of those classes, and that happens specifically in the ninth grade very intently, and then also throughout different themes in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. So it's, it's a themed class, it's a cohort-based class.
Excellent. And the other comment I'll have is, I know there was, Next Move partnered with the Health Department this year, and the past couple of years, and the pandemic limited students participating there, and I know some folks got together from Tacoma Schools and Health Department to explore ways to expand on that, but as we know, public health is, has always been important, and now the whole world knows how important it is. So hopefully, we can get more students into that pipeline to expand in our Health Department and also at the University of Washington Tacoma's Health Department training classes. So thanks.
Thank you. Director Bonbright?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I, you know, been following this and hearing bits about it, but I think this really solidified for me, you know, the structure of it and the design, which is, I think, wonderful. It actually is a nice way also to introduce a lot of these high school students to, you know, what a college system looks like, and how seminars and those kinds of things that are really what tend to excite people most when they find their passion. So I love the structure. Now, you may have said, said this somewhere, and I just missed it, but what, I know they're in cohorts, and how many kids are in each of the, each grade at this point?
We have 75 students in ninth grade, and then 60 in 10th grade, and then there's groups of 45 or so. So there's a total of 290 students across the two schools right now, and that's in just three grade levels, ninth, 10th, and 11th. Each year, we, we're adding a group, so next year will be our first year of the four full years.
Wow. Congratulations to all of you. I have to say, it's, we're really harping tonight on the innovation and partnerships component of what's so valuable about our community, and I just, this is a perfect example of, you know, planning ahead, thanks to, you know, superintendent and deputy superintendent as well, for all of you to think ahead and really put this in place, because those folks that don't realize that we're going to have this gap are going to be caught, you know, other communities are going to be caught, you know, wondering what happened to them when we're actually planning ahead. So thanks for that. I really think it's very innovative and successful as well. So, and I love the, that, that it's practical as well as academic, and also you're leaning into what their, where their passions are, but giving them an opportunity to explore different, different components. It's all the, all the working of a successful program. So thanks so much to each and every one of you, your commitment.
I have a few comments, and they're not in any good order, so sorry about that. First, I think, I just love the guiding principles that you started with. I think having those kind of vital signs, as you talked about it, and having that shared North Star probably provides like a strong foundation for your partnership work, and I think seeing the six items that are included just really resonate with me and resonate, I think, with the goals of the board and the district overall. So I just appreciate you being so explicit about what your kind of values and guiding principles are. I'm channeling Director Stroger in, in here, and I know he would say something like, this is really changing lives. Like, I think he really is passionate about CTE opportunities like many of us are, but I'm just going to channel him because he couldn't be here tonight, and just thank you all for the attention to creating more equitable access to living wage jobs, living wage jobs and careers, and just really being so thoughtful in your partnership across all of the team, and really trying to get to that goal for our kids in our community. I think also that the, it's really impressive and exciting to see the mix of higher, institution of higher ed partners. It's really great, too. Like, I used, I was an admission counselor at the University of Puget Sound back in my first life after undergrad, and I didn't really know what occupational therapists and physical therapists did until I had to learn about their programs so I could talk about it with students. So I think just the mix of program opportunities between those three institutions, like OT, PT, Puget Sound, all the nursing options at UWT, all the other pathways at Bates, really does provide students with a well-rounded picture of what the variety of healthcare career opportunities are. So I just think that's a great point of awareness for students, too. I think the only real question I have is more about what you're seeing right now in terms of students and their course-taking patterns. I know that the program itself, it's pretty clear how you sequence the four years, but what are you, what kind of flexibility do students still have in their schedules to pursue other interests, or to take additional AP classes, or what are students, what's the rest of the schedule look like for kids, and what are you seeing in terms of kind of patterns, if any, and how students are kind of blending the healthcare academy focus with anything else that they're interested in?
Yeah, absolutely. So in the ninth grade, it's three of their six classes, but it's their, their science class, their English class, and then their CTE class. So students also have the opportunity to take a band or a music or a theater, as well as the social studies and other classes. So they get those elective choices and those core choices. And then in 10th grade, they can continue with those other choices as well. And so we've mapped it out so that they do continue to be able to be involved in the comprehensive high school program. So we have students who play in the band and are in HCA. We've even made some special situation exceptions for students to perhaps do even a running start class within that. 11th and 12th grade opens up a little bit more with the internship opportunities, which can be throughout the evening and after school. And so we really try to personalize the program. We say, here's the coursework that you'll do to make sure that you're meeting not only graduation requirements, but also the requirements of your post-secondary school and have that clear pathway, but also able to pursue your other interests, if that's, you know, in creative writing, or band, or music, or, you know, all those other important classes. So that's, that's on the top of our list of things to make sure that students have a broad experience, and it's not just all about the healthcare, because you have to have a broad experience to be successful in that field as well.
My actual last question is still on the topic of scheduling and kind of the mix of cohorts, the cohort experience, and then flexibility and personalization. What, have you all thought about, or did you in the planning process consider cohorting the math experience in a similar way? Or how are you, how, math and science, we often talk about it going hand in hand, and for many of these career pathways, there's more or less math required and more rigorous math along the ways. How have you all approached, provide, either thinking about math and potentially cohort experience or not, and if, and in this context where there isn't, what kind of support do students receive around math success connected to program require, or healthcare program requirements?
We decided not to cohort the math class in there. The students do take four years of math, and they come in at the appropriate level. And so we didn't want to choose, students had to come in at the geometry level because that, that's a barrier. And so we really tried to have that be within the regular classes and not the HCA classes, but we do provide tutoring support and work together with the high schools to make sure that they're being successful and that they are mapping out to take the four years of math that's necessary. And some of them take the calculus class, or they take statistics, and it's on there. But because of the specific interests of students at that 11th and 12th grade level and what their hope is for post-high school, some of them might choose to do a calculus route, or some of them might choose to do a statistics route, depending on which one of these pathways makes the most sense. So we felt like it was a harder piece to prescribe, whereas the science had a little bit better of a way to connect curricularly to, to the English and the CTE class. But we definitely give support.
Thank you. Any other follow-up questions? Nope.
Madam President, if I may, in addition to Ms., our Superintendent Santorno's great vision of this, I, I think it's important that there's an unsung hero that's in the room that has really been here since day one, and that's Assistant Superintendent Ms. Toni Pace. And she has shepherded this internally and in leadership with our partners all the way through, and her expertise as, joke as a recovering high school principal about how to map those out, where are the curriculum adoption opportunities, or connections, partnerships, and then that equity lens of where do we make sure that through our cohorting, we're not excluding children from participating, students, I guess they're not children at that phase, they're our students. And so there are numerous partners, including the project management's office and Ms. Kathy Littman and all those, but Ms. Toni Pace has really been our guiding person to support and partner with Ms. Tinder and Mary Lee throughout this process. So just want to thank Ms. Pace.
Thank you for that. Yeah, thanks for the, yeah. Again, this is really exciting to see, and I just want to just say it explicitly, and it was kind of alluded to, like this, you all mentioned this, thinking about this program started in 2015, so I just think collectively as a community, we are all really fortunate to have the longevity of leadership that we've had to build these partnerships and to see little baby ideas through to full-blown. We've got three cohorts of students in a program that is going to lead to living wage jobs. So thank you all again for all the work that you do and for being willing to collaborate, because it's not easy. Partnerships take work. So thank you all. Well, we will keep moving on in the agenda to item number eight, the superintendent's report, 8.1, graduation appreciation.
So it's so exciting for me just to talk about graduation. I mean, we know we graduate students every year, but this one was just really special, and I want to do two things. First, I just want to give you some graduation stats. We had 1,653 Tacoma Public School students cross the stage. We had 6,270 Tacoma Public School guests watch in person. We had 130 staff that worked the event. We had 30, 37,000 is the number of times our graduations have been viewed as of two days ago, and we have 4,467 high-resolution photos from graduations were uploaded and shared on the district's Facebook page. So I just think that is so impressive. And one of the things I was impressed about when I went to the graduation, and, you know, we were, you know, we had a rainstorm, we had a windstorm, we had all kinds of things going on. And I remember when I took my 13-year-old to Disneyland many, many, many years ago, and we were going to go to Disneyland, and it was raining cats and dogs, and I just remember that Disneyland said, no, we're not going to pick you up in a bus, we're going to pick you up in a limo. And we went to Disneyland, and they had umbrellas, and they had ponchos, and they were ready. And that's how I felt our graduation was. When it was raining and those seats were all soaking wet, people started passing out towels. They were ready for it, and had, you know, were letting them wipe off the seats. And so I couldn't help myself. I'm going to have Kevin, in just a second, I'm going to have Kevin stroll, scroll through the pictures from every graduation, but as he does, I just want to read the letter. We sent an email to all 130 staff, and what's cool about it is that it was all across, you know, all across our system. I forgot my big badge one day as I was walking in, and I thought, ah, it shouldn't be a problem. And the lady said, who are you? You can't go in there. And I said, oh, I'm so sorry, I forgot my badge. I'm the superintendent. She goes, oh, I'm so sorry, I just started yesterday. And she's out there helping with graduations. So I just think we should be so proud of the partnership of everybody coming together and pulling that off. So here's the thank you note I wrote, and Kevin, if you'll just scroll through the, the graduation pictures, I think that would be great. "Graduation team, you did it. In much less time than the concert pros need, you planned and ran multiple major events so smoothly that no one would ever know that outdoor graduations at Mount Tahoma weren't the plan all along. I had no doubt that you could pull it all off, but I have to say, I'm astonished at the dazzling result. The level of detail you provided for our nine graduation ceremonies plus Peninsulas School District's two celebrations is staggering. First of all, Mount Tahoma looks spectacular. The location and setup perfectly fit the occasion. People knew when to show up, where to park, what to bring, and what to do. The ticketing system worked smoothly with accommodations for different family needs and those with disabilities. The sound and big screens were just what the in-person audience needed to enjoy the ceremonies, no matter where they were seated, and the online experience was just as impressive. The seams on tight, on site, excuse me, each day were well-trained, and our school board members and guest speakers had the information they needed to feel prepared. That, my friends, is what I call dedication to the customer experience. You built a system that took care of every person and their every need while incorporating the required health and safety standards. Most importantly, you put on an uplifting show befitting exactly what graduates and their family needed after this crazy year, and I'm so grateful. I promise you, they will remember their graduation, and that means everything right now. Thank you for your continued dedication to our students. Together, you were all a great team, and like all great teams, you had great leadership from James Deal, Mindy McDaniel, McDaniels, and Jeremy Switzer. Their expertise, inspiration, and attention to detail were impeccable. I appreciate you." So there you have our great team, part of our great team, it's not all 130, but it was pretty incredible. So I just want to, again, thank everybody who came together to pull that off. It was pretty unbelievable.
Yeah. Well, I want to open it up to board members to see if you have any comments from your experience, or if anything you want to highlight. Director Bonbright?
Well, I would just say that last year, having been newly appointed to the board right before COVID, everyone had always said when we gone, I got on the board, that the best part was graduation, when you could, you know, shake a hand and hand a diploma and really see the pride in these kids' eyes and the joy, and we, we sort of felt a little gyp that we didn't have that happen on 2020, but we, we did it virtually, and, you know, we got to say. So this year was so magical, and I was, Mount T looked fantastic, and it was so orderly. I mean, so many people moving through, it just, and, you know, some, I just thought that the staff did a great job coordinating, you know, who goes where, and so that everything just happened on point. And the only thing that didn't go well that we couldn't control was the weather, and, you know, it just was funny. I was, I did Ideas graduation and Lincoln's, and both cases, Idea had the wind, and Lincoln had the downpour, and yet, you know, I never saw anything but smiles on those kids' faces, and just, they were so happy to be. And just, they were so happy to be together and to be outside. And it was such a joy to be able to congratulate them individually and to share in that transitional moment that's so amazing for all of these kids. And so I'm just very grateful that I had the opportunity to do that, so.
Director Von, any thoughts or comments?
Yeah, it was amazing. And it was a lot of hard work by the whole team, as you've mentioned many times. So thank you for the whole, your whole department, all the departments that participated. I was at the Foss graduation and I just, it was wonderful to see the smiling faces, the tears of joy in the students and their families outside afterwards, you know, see some folks outside afterwards too. And then the inclusivity was also something I think we shouldn't, we should mention, you know, the ability to have kids with special needs, with assisted devices, to be able to come up on the stage. That doesn't just happen, you know, anywhere, especially when you have to put something together like this outside. So great work through your whole, your whole team.
I knew I was going to forget somebody and I can't walk away without talking to, mentioning Tom Chalk. And for anybody else where I forgot, you know, I forgot their leadership, I apologize. But I do want to mention Tom Chalk. He was everywhere, every day. So that was great. There were so many people, we saw them, they came every single graduation. It was pretty amazing.
And I'll just echo everything that's already been said about the day. And it was, for me, really special because it was the last of my opportunities to preside or to present classes, graduate. It's been a great six years of doing that and I was really sad to miss last year. And I also, my oldest stepson graduated from Wilson, so it was extra, extra special to be able to get to give him a big hug on stage. But I have to say, it wasn't my day, it wasn't any of our days, but you couldn't help but feel special walking out on that floor, on that field. So I just want to thank the team for really taking the time to be so thoughtful about how to make students really feel like it was their day. And I'm not, I can't speak for any of them, but I'm sure that walking out there, they couldn't help but feel special. So just want to thank you all for all the time and energy you put into planning the day and for making it really memorable after a really tough year and a half for our students. So thank you for that. Okay, we will move on to item number 8.2, 2021-2022 budget presentation.
Good evening. Let's see if that works. Great. So thanks for having me this evening. Tonight, I'm giving you a brief overview of our budget. We want to inform the board as well as the public as to what will be included in it as a preliminary. This isn't the final adoption of our budget, that will happen on July 22nd. So tonight is a preview, an opportunity for anybody to give feedback. We'll actually have opportunities over the next month to provide feedback. So I'll go through a couple of the interactions that we've had around the budget, as well as our alignment to the strategic plan. And then my intent is to go through the perfunctory tasks of going over the budget and the four-year budgets that were required to submit to OSPI. Just as a reminder, I know you have seen this many times, Board, but for our public who isn't aware, we do a budgeting by priorities process. We align our budget to the legislative cycle. This cycle of budgeting by priorities is meant to align our budget to the strategic plan and to evidence the work that we're doing in alignment with the benchmarks. We have many contributors that participated in this year's budget process, including our board, the cabinet, and the superintendent, the community at large. We had several different areas, including our budget calculator, some surveys that we did earlier this year. Our budget webinar will be coming up. They will have a hearing tonight as well as a hearing on the 22nd. And then we had our budget advisory committee work that completed on June 6th. We also had budget and program managers as well as the budget team itself who participated in the development of our budget. A number of our activities were geared towards gaining a better understanding. We had legislative and budget updates that we provided to the board. We did a budget calculator session through our study session that we did with the board. Our budget advisory committee meetings, I thought were really a great celebration. We shared that information with you in last week's information packet as, or maybe it was the week before, as well as it is posted out on our website. If you go out to the budget page, you can find all of the information. Videos from the sessions are out there as well. So if you didn't get a chance to participate and you want to know what happened, all of that information is sitting out there, available to anybody who's interested. And then there's also still comment areas on our website that you can access. The result of the budget, as it's in our preliminary form right now, is that we are able to align to the strategic plan based on each of the five strategic initiatives. So under academic excellence, we're planning to spend around 77.5% of our budget. Now, that's a little bit more than what we've seen in past years. That's predominantly due to ESER. The ESER funding that we've planned for this year is $55 million of ESER II and III resources. And so most of that is aligned with our academic excellence goal. Early learning will be at 2.48% of our budget. Health and safety, 1.77%. Partnerships at 0.19% and operations at 18.01%. I think it's also important to note the distinction between operations and health and safety. You'll see operations went down as a percentage of our budget. Some of that is related to the fact that we've expanded our safety goal to health and safety. And so some of those health-related items moved from the operations area into the health and safety area. When I look at our preliminary budget for 2020, for 21, 20, 21, 22, excuse me, we have some specific ways as a district that we have to utilize our dollars. We budget in funds, we operate in funds. Those are each of our checkbooks that are allowed for the way that we spend money. There's about a 600-page manual, if you're ever interested, out on OSPI's site. You need some nighttime reading to get yourself through. There's a great manual out there that tells us how we, how we have to utilize these resources within these fund mechanisms. And so those six funds that we utilize here in Tacoma are the general fund, that's just our regular operating budget, like our everyday checkbook. The debt service fund pays for principal and interest on all of our loans and bonds that we have. Our associated student body fund is what the student body uses. They actually own those dollars, we just hold them on their behalf. And they use those funds to pay for fees and activities associated with whatever the student body decides they want to use them for within the guidelines of the 600-page manual. Our transportation vehicle fund is used exclusively for the purchase and repair, major repair of our yellow buses. Our trust fund is money that's held in perpetuity on behalf of others. We utilize those based on, people can set up trusts for various purposes, and we hold those dollars in trusts like donations, scholarships as an example. And then our capital and technology levy, that is our building fund as well as our technology fund. So we have a technology levy that helps to fund those and we have the bonds that have been passed in 2019, or 2020 and 2013. This general fund, so if we're focusing just on the general fund right now, that's the top left of the, of the checkbooks. The general fund revenues that we're planning for this coming year are $553,998,600. And that's about a $57.5 million increase over the prior year. Keep in mind that $55 million of that is ESER funds. So from new revenue that we're receiving this year, we'll only see about $2.5 million of new revenue. That's significantly lower than we've seen in past years. Typically, we see around 3% increase, 2% to 3% of our revenues increasing. This is closer to a half a percent. So I think that, you know, one of the things that the legislature saw was that we were receiving some pretty significant resources from ESER. They held back on some other funding. Our expenditures are anticipated to be $587,183,999,000. I don't know why we couldn't add another dollar in there just to make it an even number, but we didn't. The increase over the prior year is $84,354, excuse me, $354,543. And that again includes $55 million of ESER expenditures planned for. Our fund balance drawdown is anticipated to be around $33.25 million. That includes a number for curriculum and instruction. That's a typical carryover that we have of the resources that curriculum and instruction has, 3.8 million, as well as other carryovers for programs like Title I or LAP or CTE. Those are pretty typical as well. This is planned for around $2.5 million. Just as a note around fund balance, I'm sorry, this slide's a little small to read. We will be able to maintain, despite the use of $33 million here, we will be able to maintain our 5% reserves. That's our primary goal, is maintaining those reserves, noting that the 5% reserve will actually be a little higher than what it would typically be by about $2.5 million because we've added $55 million of ESER funds. So we'll, we'll keep around $27.5 million in our fund balance. We'll also spend quite a bit of time making sure that we're spending within the budget that we have planned so that we are utilizing those resources effectively. But the intent of the fund balance that we will be using is to help us weather what has happened this last year. Just like probably every organization in the world, we have had a lot of disruption due to COVID. And that financial disruption that we've experienced has come with either a change in our enrollments in both the basic education and the categorical programs, as well as, you know, disruption in supply, supplies and materials cost more, revenues are down in certain areas. And so, and so our intent is to try to get past this year and use this next year as a normalizing year, see what our expenditures look like over the next year, and then we'll make some adjustments in our budget post the COVID recovery year. Just as a side note, we try to use our resources for emergencies and keeping our bond ratings high and extraordinary events. Those are the reasons why we keep fund balance. At this point, we don't believe we need to dip into the 5% due to any of those. We believe we'll have enough in excess of that to be able to cover it. To share with you what we anticipate our general fund budget to look like, the primary resource that we get is from the state. 65.6% of our budget will be in state resources. Our local levy will make up around 13.5% of our budget. ESER will be at 10% of our budgeted resources. The federal dollars will be at 8.1%. And then we have those two small boxes off to the right. The blue color is around 1.5%. Those are local non-tax dollars, you know, interest, donations, fines and fees. And then we have our other revenues, which are fees that come from outside of the district, other entities like facility rentals or other school districts. And that makes up about 1.3% of our revenues. Looking at our expenditures, our, our main expenditure is for certificated staff. That's a pretty broad terminology to cover teachers, nurses, counselors, some of our administrative staff that has, that holds certificates. The next highest area that we have is our benefits and payroll taxes. That'll be around 19.6% of our budget. Our supplies and materials will be around 14.6% of our budget. Classified salaries, that's everyone who's not certificated, would be around 14% of our budget. Contracted services will be 9% of our budget. And then there's two tiny little boxes off to the right that you can barely see. They make up 0.3% of our budget for travel and large equipment. As I mentioned, we're required to submit a number of different types of information to the board in preparation for an adoption. The four-year outlook is one of those items. What you see in the first year is our budget that's planned for this year broken out. Years three, four, two, three, and four are, we have identified what we believe the revenues will be based on the OSPI multi-year tool that's out on their website as a baseline, not the entire amount, because we actually received some more money than what they put out there. But that's our baseline. And then we have balanced our expenditures to meet those revenues because that would be our expectation typically, in a typical year. Whether we would be able to utilize fund balance will depend on whether we have fund balance to be able to utilize. And we didn't build a significant amount of ESER past the current year, although we may have some additional ESER resources to build into future years. We have the other funds budgeted as well. Here on the preliminary budgeted funds for debt service, we're planning around $61 million to cover the principal and interest payments on our current outstanding bonds, which are $972 million of bonds. We just issued in 20, last summer, our $535 million worth of bonds. And so that, that we're just now starting to pay off on those. The associated student body will hold around $3.4 million of expenses. Our transportation vehicle fund, we're anticipating the replacement of six current buses, around $780,000. And then our capital and technology levy, $164 million of building fund expenses for technology as well as for the new buildings that we're in the process of building. There's a four-year outlook for these as well. The first year, again, is the current year that's coming up, or the year that's coming up, not the current year, excuse me. And just a note, I think the thing that's most alarming about when you look at the slide is the bottom where it says capital revenues are only going to be around 25 million and the capital expenditures are well in excess of that. Just keep in mind that the revenues that are coming in are the technology levy that we have on the books today that will continue on, voter-approved technology levy of 24 million, as well as some interest, and that the expenditures are based off of the 2013 and the 2020 capital bond that was approved. We're nearing the finish line of our budget, but we're not quite there yet. If anybody wants to access additional information, they can seek additional information at www.tacomaschools.org. And if you go to the Find It Fast feature up in the right-hand corner of the search field, type in budget, our budget page comes right up and there's a good amount of information that's available there, as well as information on how to reach out and ask any questions of the budget team so that we can answer any questions that, that might exist or that there are comments that anybody wants to address with us. We do intend to have a formal hearing this evening, as well as a hearing right before our budget adoption on July 22nd. We will also anticipate a budget webinar. We're still trying to nail down a date with summer, it's becoming a little more challenging with calendars. So that'll be occurring sometime likely the week of July 8th through the 14th. On July 22nd, we will not need to do any remaining ESER authorization because we intend to do that this evening at, at your approval. But we will have a second budget hearing as well as our adoption. Just as a quick note while I have you, we do have our ESER timelines. This evening, you will see an agenda item for what we anticipated would be here on June 24th to approve the remaining grant for ESER III. And then we do have a finalized spending plan. And when I say finalized, it's the final that we're preparing for you today. It's not a required document, it's not something that we'll have to do, but we do have to submit a budget to OSPI as part of the grant approval. And so we'll be basing our, our initial request on these resources. We did receive some feedback. A lot of what the feedback we received was already in alignment with many of the areas that we had in the plan. So I, I don't believe that we've changed anything in the way that the categorizations work out, but we did acknowledge and address a number of feedback areas that we engaged with people on. And that's what I had for you. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I know there might be a couple of questions or comments out there. Yeah, I'll start with you, Director Von.
Okay, great. I, thanks so much. This was really comprehensive and, you know, it gets clearer and clearer every time you you present it. So thanks so much for that. I have two questions. If you could go back to the slide that talked about the expenditures on basic ed over the period of four years, the four-year general, let's see, it's the, it's slide number 13.
Yes, one.
Yeah. I'm sure that there's a reason. I'm just wondering why in 2022 to 23, the budget goes down in basic ed and then goes up again. But I, it's sort of, it dips and I'm just sort of wondering, not very much, but I'm just trying to figure out why that would be since we're.
Enrollment.
Is that the enrollment catching up with enrollment? Because we're guaranteed.
Ms. Bell says enrollment.
Okay, so it's, okay, so it's because we've got some hold harmless this year? And maybe that's not the right term, but we're being, we're being able to use previous?
We use a demographer to help us with our five-year projections, our 10-year projections, really. And this is based partially on that. It's also based off of what OSPI has said. So there may be some adjustments. I think one of the things that might have gone down, although that wouldn't be basic ed, so I shouldn't say that out loud. One of the things, there's a number of things in the multi-year plan that did adjust depending on the year. And I do believe basic education was one of those things that made an adjustment.
Because we're looking at, not next year, but this is for the second year out.
Correct.
And that was just why I was trying to figure out if maybe it's because we're not having to count the enrollment from this year, we're looking to our 2019, correct? Enrollment, we're still able to use that?
Right.
And then 2022, we're having to use whatever next year is?
So for the 2122 year, for our basic education apportionment, it will be based off of our current enrollment. The levy will be able to be utilized off of the 1920 enrollment, provided that we go to school five days a week, starting September.
That was what I was.
Correct.
Going to figure out. Okay, thank you. And then my next one is on ESER III funds. You had that. You had that, how they're planned, the plan, that's the one. Can you, I'm looking here for mental health. Where would we be spending money on time with mental health supports for students as well as for staff?
Thank you. So I think that it could occur in both areas of the learning acceleration and advancement, as well as the whole child supports. The, we are intending to add some additional LPNs. We have some COVID supervision that's happening in schools, and there's some counseling supports, mental health supports, and all of those things are sprinkled within those two categories.
And have we done any consideration with the new mental health tax for Pierce County? I know they're going to have some additional Essar money of their own, well, it's not Essar, but federal money to spend, and I just am wondering if we're thinking forward about partnerships as, that we could start thinking about building in, because as Essar money goes, it's one-time-only expenditures, not really to hire people because it's, you can't keep it going. But I'm just trying to figure out if there's relationships that we're starting to build, make sure that the county can kind of build ongoing expenses around mental health for our students and into their plan.
So we have engaged Superintendent Santana with the other Pierce County superintendents, have engaged Executive Dan Meyer in several different conversations with an advocacy that, how do we build on some of these Essar supports that are being established for the long haul and sustainable funding sources to address this so we don't have support cliff? Because that's one of the challenges that we're...
And that's what I'm worried about.
Including preventative measures for mental health. So the county is looking at health and fitness and outdoor activities as a preventative measure this summer, and then working with that. So we've presented our work already with them around the ELO community partnership opportunities that have several different supports in there and a variety of other programs. And I think there's some even supports inside the infrastructure that address mental health as well.
Okay, great. And for our staff too, because I know whole child is for the students, I'm wondering.
Yeah, so there's a number of things that we're exploring that allow us opportunities for connectivity, belonging with the staff. Remember that, you know, these are large buckets that we're looking at. There's much more work to do with the individual work plans.
Yeah.
Things that we've explored, telehealth, a variety of other opportunities. We just, you know, the, we have to finalize our ability to accept the money, as well as our ability then to organize teams to gather additional feedback. So we haven't had a chance to work through all the different action plans.
And I was just trying, and I totally get that. I would just not, you know, these titles are very specific, and I'm thinking, how do we, you know, because there are a lot of things we've talked about as a group, and you've come up with some great ideas in the past that you've floated, and I'm thinking, I don't really see where they fit. So that helps.
And I do have a more detailed slide that sits on the Essar page that I can share with you all, send you a link to it, that gives a little more detail as to like the types of things that are within each of those larger buckets.
Okay. That's helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you. No, it was absolutely fabulous.
Thanks.
Great news.
Director Leon, any comments or questions?
Thanks for the presentation. You mentioned that some of the change in the health and safety budget going up comes from operations being shifted into health and safety. Is that a shift of the money from the same, where the same programs going to be going on, or is this a slight expansion of programs also?
So the answer to your question is both. We did move. So keep in mind that when we do our budget that's showing the strategic goals, it's all done in packages. So in this package, it included these activities, and in this package is this. You know, we do have some resources that are aligned for Essar that are meant for that. Those don't even incorporate what's happening in the health and safety goal, because they're happening over in the Essar package, which was in the academic excellence goal. But we did add to our health and safety several positions that are going to be ongoing positions beyond what we're adding in the Essar resources.
Thanks.
I would just also, when we look at percentages versus raw dollars, so our budget next year is considerably larger, so that when we see 15% of a larger budget, you know, 1.7% of a larger budget, there are more opportunities for us to make investment in there. And so, and then we were really cautious under Ms. Medina's leadership to make sure that we thought about sustainability as we go through. So adding in a manner that we need to think about provides supports and sustainability in the basic ed budget.
Thank you for the presentation. All of this is really clear, and some of the questions that have already been asked have been helpful. But I just want to go back to slide 13, the one that breaks down the four-year outlook again. Can you describe a little bit of what's happening with the swings in state categorical?
Come on up, Kristin.
Those seem pretty big.
Ms. Bell's going to have a great response for that because she helped prepare this slide.
Thank you.
What's going on with categorical?
The revenues in state categorical?
Okay, let me just remember here for a minute. So, the way, the multi-year tool creates kind of a baseline when we were looking at that, and when we do the multi-year tool for this fiscal year, for 2122 compared to what we're budgeting in reality for 2122, there's a delta. And so we needed to provide some kind of a flex, so the multi-year tool doesn't take into consideration some of our revenue resources that we do have. T-PET grant was on there, OSSI grants are on there, various grants. In addition to, there's just numbers and dollars that we have that we know about that the multi-year tool does not. And so there is some flex in that 122.71, and I have a lot of detail around it. It's off the top of my head, I worked really in depth on it. I have all of it for you if you want to see it.
You've already, I think you already answered my question.
Okay.
Because I was, you've named off some state categorically funded revenue sources that are not enrollment-driven, and in my head I had a bunch that like track enrollment, and so I was wondering why the pattern of change isn't similar to the pattern for enrollment change. So that was helpful clarification.
Okay.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Rosalyn. We will move on to item number nine, the public hearing on the budget. The Board of Directors of Tacoma Public Schools will hold a public hearing regarding the 2021-2022 budget. Anyone may appear and be heard for or against any part of the proposed 2021-2022 budget. A copy of the proposed resolution is on file in the Budget Office at the Central Administration Building, and a copy will be furnished to any person who may request it. Approval of the resolution to adopt the 2021-2022 budget is scheduled at the Board's regular meeting to be held on July 22, 2021. And just to reiterate, this is not the only opportunity to provide comment on the budget. There's a webinar coming up shortly. There's also opportunities to provide feedback electronically, but this is our first hearing on the budget. Is there anyone here to speak on the budget?
I didn't receive any requests to speak.
Give a good pause for 30 seconds or so. Hearing none, again, please reach, please visit our website if you have questions about items in the budget, and please provide your feedback along the way. And again, adoption will happen in our meeting on July 22. Thank you all. Item number 10, members of the public wishing to address the Board. No alternative protocols. School Board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting. The superintendent or her designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at a meeting, you may also send an email to theboard@dakoma.k12.wa.us. You have two options to provide public comment. The first is in-person during the open public meeting. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. You'll have up to three minutes to share your comments. Option number two is to submit written comment, and we have one comment that's been submitted tonight in writing, but do we have any public speakers signed up to...
No.
...in person?
No, we don't.
Well, I'll go ahead and read the name. So we, our one public comment that was submitted in writing is from Sally Perkins, and it's regarding policy 2020. Course design and selection of materials must include the Board's commitment to equity, cultural responsiveness, and historical completeness. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
So we will move on to item number 11, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I still move.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, and for the public's information, there are a number of items in the consent agenda that are regularly adopted at open business meetings. The Board has an opportunity to review these items in advance, but we take action on them all at once. Is there any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Item number 12, policy matters, 12.1, second reading of revised policy 2020, course design, selection, and adoption of instructional materials.
The General Counsel, in partnership with the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, recommends that the Board approve the revised policy 2020, second reading.
Is there a motion to adopt item 12.1?
I move to adopt item 12.1.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments on item 12.1? Director Bondbrake?
Well, first of all, I want to thank the legal counsel and her team, as well as all the other folks who worked hard on this resolution and the regulation that was with it. But a lot has changed this past year in terms of how we see and are looking at our equity work, and I know we, just our last, was it the last meeting or two meetings ago, whatever, we passed our equity policy review process, and we'll discuss that maybe later, but I think that this was one of those items that was up for consideration right about the same time we were doing that. So it was the first, we were able to apply our new system to this policy and make sure that we had an equity lens on this work. So I want to thank everyone for their input, including Sally Perkins, who's the member of the public who submitted comments for her eagle eye on some of the earlier work and making sure that we were all in sync on what we were trying to achieve here. So just wanted to make sure that folks know that this is, we have tried to find a way to make sure that as we look at these materials moving forward, that we're putting them through an equity lens, and that's so critical to the work we're doing moving forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll just offer that I appreciate the revisions to this policy. I think the previous version really spoke to just core instructional materials singularly, but I think that way that this policy has been revised is more in line with thinking about, and I know what the team has been doing, but wasn't memorialized in our policy, but just thinking about a really coherent instructional system that includes the core curricular materials. We talked a lot about in the context of adopting our most recent math adoptions, like, will these materials be used in the context of intervention support too, or is it going to be standalone? So I just really appreciate seeing all of that come together and really be, reflect kind of an aligned approach to instructional materials reflected in the policy. So thanks to the team for that. And all those in favor of adopting item 12.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Thank you. Item number 13, financial report. A quarterly presentation on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at www.tacomaschools.org/departments/businessandfinance. I think we have had sufficient presentation on the budget tonight, so we look forward to our next quarterly presentation. Item number 14, curriculum instruction, 14.1, approval to purchase springboard curriculum materials for the 2021-2022 school year.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase and delivery of springboard curriculum materials before the opening of the 2021-2022 school year in the amount of $225,200, including sales tax and shipping. Funding source, CNI and BE, which is basic education funds.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 14.1?
Motion to adopt it.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 14.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Item 14.2, approval of interlocal agreement between Real Life School and Tacoma Public Schools for the 2021-2022 school year.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the interlocal agreement between Real Life School and the Tacoma Public Schools for the 2021-2022 school year. Funding source, Student Services.
Is there a motion to adopt item 14.3? I mean, 14.2, sorry about that.
I like the motion to adopt.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 14.2, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is adopted. Item 14.3, approval of contract number TSD-19-049. BHC Fairfax Hospital Northwest Soil and Tacoma Public Schools, September 1, 2020 through August 21, 2022.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD-19-049, Northwest School of Innovative Learning for September 1, 2020, through August 21, 2022. Funding source, Student Services.
Is there a motion to adopt item 14.3?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of adopting item 14.3, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is adopted. Item number 15, business matters, 15.1, approval of invoice from Power School Group LLC for Schoology Learning Management System.
The Deputy Superintendent recommends the Board of Directors approve the payment of invoice number 25922 to Power School Group LLC under contract number TSD-20-210 for the period of August 4, 2021, through July 31, 2022.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 15.1?
Motion to adopt.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about item 15.1?
Question. Just presume there's software edits and adjustments and improvements in Schoology each year, because that's what we've been using, and just looking for improvements for this next coming year. Is that something that, part of the purchase?
Yeah, so when we did the original RFP, there are conditions that the company had to respond to, and part of that is adaptive as we go. And so it's a yes and, and possibly no based off of what is in that original contract. And so this is an extension of the contract, but if, it kind of goes back and forth to what is the improvement, what's the source of the improvement. We don't have flexibility per se to say, well, we want this new innovative idea, and you're responsible to innovate it and put there. But there are improvements of speed, efficiency, effectiveness, response, those things that they are required to, then we see improvements in those areas.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 15.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Item 15.2, approval of contract number TSD-21-018, Maxim Healthcare Services, Inc., Incorporated, and Tacoma Public Schools from September 1, 2020, through August 31, 2024.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD-21-018 between Maxim's Healthcare Services and the Tacoma Public Schools, September 1, 2020, through August 31, 2024. Funding service, excuse me, funding source, Student Services.
Is there a motion to adopt item 15.2?
Motion to adopt.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 15.2, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Item number 15.3, approval of acceptance of American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Grant from the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Essar III Grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction in the amount of $70,802,680, an expenditure of funds in accordance with accepted guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Is there a motion to adopt?
I still move. I want that money.
15.3?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. And can I ask you a formality question? Is, do you, or maybe this is a question for Ms. Trueblood. Is, do you, or maybe this is a question for Ms. Trueblood. Do we have to accept the funds because we're accepting the responsibility for implementing the funds in accordance with the guidelines? What's the formal, what's the requirement for acceptance?
It's a reimbursement grant. So in the same fashion that we have to accept every other grant in order to reimburse and say that we, yeah, we're definitely accepting terms to it because we say that we are going to comply, and we're going to, you know, we have to do an assurance with it. So.
You can't just take it without us saying yes. Okay.
No. I mean, we can spend the money, but we're not going to get reimbursed for it if we don't.
Got it. Thank you. All those in favor of adopting item 15.3, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Thank you for the work on that. Item number 15.4, approval of acceptance of Green's Schoolyards Grant from Stafford, for Stafford Elementary from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the Green Schoolyards Grant for Stafford Elementary from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction in the amount of $200,000, an expenditure of funds according to accepted guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 15.4?
I so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 15.4, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Item 15.5, approval of acceptance of No Kid Hungry Grant from Share Our Strength.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the No Kid Hungry Grant from the Share Our Strength in the amount of $86,500, an expenditure of funds according to accepted guidelines. Funding source, Share Our Strength.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 15.5?
I so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 15.5, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Item 15.6, approval of addendum number two to increase the yearly amount of the dairy products and increase the yearly value of the overall contract of Meadow Sweet Farms, Incorporated.
Yes. Due to COVID-19, our district, like many other districts, had to shift to shelf-stable milk, which has led to increased costs, which is reflected in this agenda. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve addendum number two for Meadow Sweet Farms. The total value of the addendum is $1,035,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 15.6?
I so move.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions about this item? Can you tell me what shelf-stable milk means?
It's non-refrigerated milk that you can actually put on the shelf, which lasts longer.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor of adopting item 15.6?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, the motion is adopted. Sorry, I was stewing on the shelf-stable.
I mean, I know.
Okay, thank you. Item number 15.7, approval of addendum number two to Catalyst Workplace Activation Contract for District Furniture Fixtures and Equipment.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve addendum number two for the Catalyst Workplace Activation Contract in the amount of $475,000, the total contract value of $1,935,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 15.7?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 15.7, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Item 15.8, approval to negotiate and award a design-build-alternative-method contract with Abshire Construction Company for the Safety and Security Upgrades Bundle.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the superintendent to negotiate and award a design-build contract to Abshire Construction Company for the Safety and Security Upgrades Bundle.
Is there a motion to adopt item 15.8?
Motion to adopt.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? I have one. What's, I know you're still going to go into negotiations, but what's your expectation about the anticipated, like, end date of this bundle of work?
That's part of the process. Once we deal with the contract, we're going to develop a schedule.
A timeline. Okay.
Obviously, we want to be very productive and not have a very long timeline.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor of adopting item 15.8, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Moving on to item number 16, other business, 16.1, approval to rename Jason Lee Middle School to Hilltop Heritage Middle School.
Before I read the motion, I just want to say that one of the things that the board that you had asked us to do is really consider and to work and partner with the Puyallup Tribe to come up with a way to honor, you know, to honor the Lushutseed, Lushutseed language, and also, you know, the land acknowledgement. And I just want you to know that we've come up with a really good plan. It's still in design, but with our consultation with the tribe, and I think that Charlotte from the tribe is still talking to her council, so it's not a done deal yet. But we're making some really good headway. And I know Chris's department is designing, you know, is making a design that'll go into the entryway, so we're real pleased with the way it's going.
And just to be clear, you, entryway of all of our schools, is that right?
Correct. And facilities, you know, something that's a little different. So the Superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors rename Jason Lee Middle School to Hilltop Heritage Middle School effective August 1, 2021. And that'll just be the beginning of a transition. You know, we'll start that on, in August.
Thank you. Are there any, is there a motion to adopt item 16.1?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, I mean, any comments or questions from members of the board?
So just as a point of clarification, what I'm hearing you say is that when we had this conversation, we were talking about in choosing a name that the tribe was feeling was respectful and all. They've said, my understanding is that they've said that Hilltop Heritage is fine with them. And am I getting that right? I mean, they feel that that's a good name?
We, to be, you know, for me to be honest, we didn't talk specifically about their acceptance of the name. They knew that my recommendation was Hilltop Heritage, but that accompanying that change was to really look at honoring the Puyallup Tribe and the language. And so that's what we've really been discussing.
So then, and then what came out of that was a conversation about doing something at each and every single school, instead of just naming one school in the Lushutseed's language. So, which is a fabulous, fabulous move, which I think is very respectful.
And it's, you know, and it sounds so far, and like I said, I want to be careful because this is, you know, we want the tribal council to approve. But, you know, maybe something as simple as subbing out the elementary for a Lushutseed name, and middle for a Lushutseed name, and high school for a Lushutseed name. So we're real happy with the consultation and the collaboration.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at. Thank you for that.
Any other comments? Nope. Director Leon, any questions or comments? I just want to thank the team of folks who came together to do the work, to get input from the community and the school community to get to the recommendations for this. Again, just for the public's awareness, the school board ultimately has the responsibility of receiving a recommendation from the superintendent and taking action on that recommendation. But the request to rename the school initially came from the community. This isn't a name change that we initiated as a body. We were responding to our community who came to us and asked us to consider a name change. As a result, we assembled, our Superintendent Santorno's team assembled a group of community stakeholders, school stakeholders, members of the Puyallup Tribe to consider some different name options, or to consider whether or not a name change might be warranted. And the action that we're taking tonight is a result of about a year, over a year's worth of work now, I think. So thank you for bringing this recommendation and the associated additional kind of plan to us. Appreciate your team's work on this. Given, I think, the significance of this item, I'll ask the General Counsel to do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Did I ask for a motion? We asked for a second. Roll call vote, please.
Yes. President Cobb?
Aye.
Vice President Bonbright?
Aye.
Director Leon?
Aye.
The motion passes three to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 16.2, Equity Policy Review Team Update. And I want to defer to General Counsel Trueblood to give a quick update on the process that we've engaged in to pull together an equity policy review team. But just for a little bit of context on this item, as the board engaged in its kind of annual planning over the course of the last year, one of the goals that we identified was really trying to embed more of a thoughtful approach to ensuring that our policies furthered our equity goals across the school district. And one of the ways that we thought that we could do that was really including more voices in the policy development and review process. And by doing that, we thought we needed a team. So we asked General Counsel Trueblood to, and Superintendent Santorno, to helplessly put together a process for engaging community members in the policymaking process more intentionally. So we just want to thank you for your work on that and for moving this priority initiative for us forward. This, this change in creating this team also accompanies a more of a, just access shift that we've made related to our policymaking. We've said this a couple of times in previous board meetings, but now when we have a policy that is up for first reading and awaiting its second reading, members of the community can now go on our website and provide comments in writing on those policies. That's not a level of access that we've historically provided to our public comment around policymaking process. People could always come in person to board meetings, but we know that that's a barrier for some folks who would rather be able to just engage from home. So you can now also provide public comment on policies as they move through the process online. But again, this equity policy review team is specifically targeted at trying to get a diversity of voices at the table to help us review policies as we're adopting them and realizing them. So if you don't mind, General Counsel Trueblood, just saying a couple of words about the process we've engaged in, and where we're at, and where we're heading next.
Absolutely. Thank you. And it's really an honor and a privilege that I take very seriously, being asked to help lead this group. I know that I have work to do, and the district has work to do as we strive to eliminate barriers that keep our students from thriving. And so I'm really thankful for the opportunity to partner with Susan Anderson, our executive assistant in legal, also partnering with President Cobb and Vice President Bonbright, Superintendent Santorno, and Deputy Superintendent Garcia, as well as other district leaders, the cabinet members, Justina Johnson, our Director of Academic Equity, Amanda Scott Thomas, our Director of Partnerships, Malik Benro, our Deputy General Counsel. As we've looked at how do we make it easier to hear from different voices in the community, we put out an application process, really simple. We got 37 applicants for the Equity Policy Review Team, which we thought was fantastic. And we wanted to have as many voices as we could at the table, but also in a manageable group that it would be meaningful for us to work with. And so we have identified a group of 14 that Susan Anderson is in the process of reaching out to and confirming their continued interest in being on the Equity Policy Review Team, as well as you have asked that we have our two student representatives also join the Equity Policy Review Team. And I understand that James Neal is working with Tracy Jones, the board's executive assistant right now, to identify those two student representatives. So our next step after we confirm those representatives is to schedule some orientation time so that we all get on the same page as far as what we want our work to be. And it's a little bit like building an airplane mid-flight. We haven't been able to find another example of a school district who's put together an Equity Policy Review Team quite like this to, so we're, we're very open to the process and having the team even help us define what the process will look like. But we'll hope to do those orientations in August, and that as we start bringing more of our policies forward to board meetings, that the Equity Policy Review Team is actually given input even before your first reading. As much as we'd love to have more people on the Equity Policy Review Team, we encourage anybody who applied or didn't apply to still engage in the policy review process. As President Cobb said, we now have a spot on our website that makes it easy to submit feedback when we do have a policy end of review. And Susan and I are always available as well. You can email us, call us, if there's a community member who has a particular interest in policy development. So I'm really excited about this work. We just had our cabinet retreat this week, and Carla provided me with the book Cast, which is very interesting. I'm reading. We worked with Jamad Khanley, who's an amazing expert in equity. And we're all challenged right now at the cabinet to think about what we can do this next year to help further equity. And I'm just really excited because I think I have one of the most exciting projects. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the board? Director Bonbright?
I just want to, you know, thank the team and also thank all those individuals who reached out and volunteered to be part of the Equity Review Team and to welcome the 14 members that we did choose. So thank you so much for that, and looking forward to some great input. And thank you very much.
Director Leon, any comments?
Thanks for the strong work your team's done. And you know, as you have done this work, that found barriers, as you mentioned, that are sometimes intentional and sometimes unintentional. So removing them, for whatever reason they're there, is key for full, the ability to fully have our students fully flourish and our staff. Thanks.
I know I said a few things on the front end, but I'll just say, last comment, like, I think this work for us, just to be clear, is about making sure, or about thinking about multiple ways to make sure that we're not missing anything. Like that we don't have any blind spots that are preventing from any group of students in our district from not achieving the goals that they set for themselves and the high academic standards and goals that we have for them. So I just always think about that article about the curb cut effect, where people had to fight really hard to get curb cuts that provide wheelchair access. But providing wheelchair access provides access for people pushing a stroller, provides access for people on a skateboard, provides access for people pushing a cart. It's not just about that group. So I think this is a great way to really get us to think around all the corners and know that when we figure out something great that works for one group of students, it's probably going to work for a lot of other groups of students, too. But it was actively acting as a barrier for the group that we were focusing on in that moment. So I just look forward to this work. And again, keeping an eye on, making sure that every student has every opportunity every single day. So thank you and the team for that work. Item number 17, board comments and reports. Any committee reports, community event reports, or updates in general? I'll start with Vice President Bonbright. Any board comments or reports tonight?
Nothing other than the usual meetings. And for those that, you know, that here I talk about JMAC, the Joint Municipal Action Committee, every board meeting, because we meet once a month, so it's always the day after a board meeting, almost always anyway. So we're moving ahead and moving forward with our asset mapping tool, to our innovation asset mapping tool across all the public entities that belong to JMAC, to look at how we address the three themes of JEDI, Public Health and Safety, and Community Wealth Building. And I happen to have, actually, we just got copies of this great book called Community, The Case for Community Wealth Building. And it's something that, that all of the members of JMAC now have their hand, in their hands. And we're trying to read a uniformed book so that we can all have, be speaking the same language about moving forward on this issue, which is so important to all of our equity work, because you can't, people are stuck in the trend of poverty. They can't get out because of all the institutionalized systems that keep them there. There's ways to build community wealth that talk about removing those barriers. And so it's the exciting work that's happening at our city, city-countywide. Public officials are working together on this issue, as well as Public Health and Safety at JEDI, which is Justice, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. So that's a big, heavy lift, and we're working towards October 15, when we're having a big community summit. So that's between now and then. We're working on this asset mapping tool to see how we can find where we're aligned as organizations that are working in the same direction, or where we might have gaps. or where we might have gaps. And so that's what we're doing over the next couple of months. So that's that. And then I think the um, committee report, and I think the community events have just been basically focused around graduation, which is, I'll let others talk about. I've already mentioned the two that I, I did. And um, I'm looking forward to the Willie Stewart Academy at the end of the month.
Thank you. Director Leon, any report tonight?
Sure. See, I'd like to just um, acknowledge and thank the C T E Department, so Technical Education, really had continued during the pandemic. We've gotten lots of really uh, amazing hands-on training for our students and that's uh, going to just continue to flourish as we get more in person. So thank you for this whole C T E department. Um, summer sports are being done safely now in most, most schools. I think it's really important. We, we were able to pull off a, you know, shortened sports season through the spring or late winter. And I think that students thrive from that. And the arts, of course, still happened in a different way, but they still happen too. I'm hoping that the, our partnerships with Metro Parks will continue to strengthen the arts for the summer, of course. Safe Streets um, on that board and they um, had a, a successful fundraising campaign last, last month. Thank you for those in the district here who participated in that. And uh, they're still a very important partner for, for our district, so.
Thank you. And I don't have any additional thoughts about graduation, but it was just great and I appreciated all the team's hard work going into that. The only other one, like, significant, significant event that I got to engage in was the bell ringing with Superintendent Santornos. We are officially close to the end of the school year. Just want to congratulate all the students for sticking with it and getting through like this non-traditional year that was great for some and really tough for others. So I just hope all students have a safe and healthy and fun summer, time to just be kids. And for those high schoolers who are thinking about getting a job, I hope that goes well for you. And just that you just take some time to relax and enjoy your youth. And I think the community partners are doing a great job of pulling together lots of opportunities for students and families. So families do, who are still looking for places for their kids to be or events for them to be engaged in, please check out like the Foundation for Tacoma Students' website to find more information about all the different opportunities in the community. But just generally, everybody to stay safe this summer. And reminder, the City of Tacoma has increased fines for fireworks. So be safe on the Fourth of July, too. Um, Director Leon?
Just one more thing. Yeah, thanks. Um, thank you to the summer school staff. Mr. Neal's helping lead that to expand summer school learning. I think we've heard that there's more enrollment there, so I think that's a great way for families. Is it too late to, to register for summer school? It's too late now?
It depends on the level. So go ahead and please contact your school. There's, sometimes there's opportunities and substitutions. And then, you know, if families are looking for great opportunities, summerlearns.org, which is sponsored by the Foundation for Tacoma Students, would be a great place um, to go. So um, they start, are scheduled to start on Monday, summer school programming. We're monitoring the weather uh, and the safety conditions, knowing that a, a, a heat wave is coming in. So um, we'll be in uh, looking at that. But right now, contact your school if you're a family member that's looking at summer school opportunities.
Thank you.
Thanks for that department. And also just thank you for all the staff, that, I mean, the teachers, the paras, every single department of what you pulled off for this school year. Thank you for all the parents and the hard work you did with your students and of course, all the students for sticking it out. Nice work.
And I think we want to also thank you folks because it has not been an easy year uh, to be at the dais either, making difficult decisions, uh, looking at all the examination of the protocols, the procedures, helping us guide through, how do we do this in a safe way? So as part of the team, thank you.
Every time someone says something, I feel like there's one more thing. I just ask families too and community members who are working in our, and around schools, just please remember that we have modified guidelines that are not the same as the guidelines for the general state's um, Safe reopen plan. Um, as I think the rest of the state and the communities feeling like we're about to open up even further, we still do have to wear masks and have to abide by other health and safety guidelines in the school context. So please be patient with us as we continue our commitment to just following the health and safety guidelines that are given to us from the local health and local and state health authorities. So they are modified for school, so just bear with us. Item number eighteen, Announcement of Future Board Meetings. Thursday, July twenty second, twenty twenty one, we'll meet at six P M. for our regular business meeting here at CAB. Thursday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty one, we'll also meet here for our regular business meeting at six P M. At CAB. And with that, we'll go to item number nineteen and we are adjourned.
Okay. Thank you. Amazing.